Okay, it is seven o'clock on the nose. So I'd like to call the November 19th, 2025 Board of Alderman Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to give an invocation before we begin? None heard. Okay. In that case, we'll have a moment of silence. Okay. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Woodham.
Here.
Alderman Detwiler.
Here.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Nay.
Here.
Alderman Waters.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Present.
Quorum is present.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns, comments on the consent agenda? There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move by Alderman Nay, second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in public comment?
Cheryl Breton.
Okay. As we move forward into public comment, I wanted to point out a couple of things here. The public comment and public hearing item on the agenda and recognition of the value of public comment on city issues and importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on matters of community interest, the Board of Alderman and Vice Residents and others interested parties to speak before the Board. I would ask anyone wishing to speak before the Board to submit a completed speaker form to the City Clerk. They're located right over there. Once your name is called, please approach the podium to address the Board. To make certain that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, I would ask that each speaker limit their comments to three minutes in duration. Also, no person will be permitted to speak more than once during the public comment, public hearing portion of our meeting. Please keep in mind that this is not a question and answer session either, and the public comment and public hearing portion of the agenda is to allow the public to comment, and please do not expect a response from your comments from the Board at this time.
Excuse me, did you just take part of my three minutes?
I'll give it back.
Give a sister a break, man.
All right. That's for everybody. We're reading that before every meeting now, so not pointing the finger at you here.
All right. My name is Cheryl Breton. My husband Larry and I live on Cruden Bay Court in Inverness subdivision. When I speak before the Board, I try to share useful information from reliable, respected sources, and from a timeline standpoint, I know I'm well ahead of the moment when you're going to have to decide if the moratorium on multifamily housing in Darden Prairie will come to an end or be extended. For that reason, I want to share information from an article published in the Wall Street Journal on October 26. In a nutshell, big surprise. There is a glut of apartment buildings in our country, and the developers can't find renters. Quoting the article, "During the early years of the pandemic, developers raced to capitalize on historically low borrowing rates, which resulted in the biggest apartment construction boom in four decades," end quote. The 2024-year-old age group, also known as the new college graduates, is usually responsible for what the article refers to as the summer renting season. But this year, the unemployment rate for that age group is 9.2%, more than double the U.S. overall unemployment rate. In fact, this September, the national average for rent dropped 0.3%, the steepest September drop in more than 15 years. Because they can't find renters, they're enticing the people who are out there, they're dangling all kinds of incentives. And so when they can't find renters, it's good news for them because some landlords are offering incentives such as 12-month leases for the price of nine months. But the downside is, the cities aren't realizing the revenue streams developers projected the renters would provide. The Wall Street Journal confirmed what we already know: Our country has a surplus of apartments. Please remember that as you continue to ponder the fate of multifamily housing in Darden Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Breton.
Next. Joel King. Mr. King?
Good evening. Joel King to Tucson Drive. Two issues I'd like to bring up. One of them is the requested suggested pay raise for the Board, and I don't understand why there would be any argument against it. This isn't the 17 or 1800s where there's not a whole heck of a lot to go look into. The Board has to go in. You have to investigate and do all kinds of work, and we expect that to be completely on your time, especially since you meet twice a month now, and it used to be once a month in this place. I'm not going to say you guys need it, but I will say you've earned it and you deserve it. Get the pay raise. It's nothing. We're talking, what, $100 bucks a month plus? Give them a stipend. Who cares? It is nothing compared to what you guys do. So please, vote for the pay raise, okay? Get yourself something, at least. The next thing is my favorite topic: Stump Road. "I'm back," is right. Would you please go drive down Stump Road and look at my property? I've had a discussion with Matt before, and he says the property that's not been fixed is my property. However, I had a survey done, and there's a tag there that shows my property line, and everything from my property line to the sidewalk is not fixed. It is just bare dirt, hasn't been leveled out completely, hasn't been sodded or anything like that. But if it is my property, if you guys want to give it to me or make sure it's mine, please give me a notified or a certified letter notarized saying, "That's my property from the city, from the county, and from, I don't know if it's MoDOT or whoever," because if it's my property, I'll take care of it. I'll fix it. But if it isn't, please repair what was damaged by the stump road expansion. That's it. Thank you. Get yourself the money.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anybody else?
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay. So we'll move into public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion to open the public hearing by Alderman Detwiler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gettemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. So our applicant is... Yep. I don't have... Oh, here we go. The applicant is Stillwater Grove, CUP side plan rezoning request, R1A, R1D, to allow single-family attached dwellings. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman. For the record, my name's Mike Faulkner. I'm Vice President of Sterling Engineering Company, offices at 5055 New Baumgartner Road, St. Louis 63129. And thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation here on behalf of the BlueOnyx Development LLC, and we're seeking the Board's favorable consideration for the rezoning of the 6.84 acres at the northwest corner of 364 and Bates Road. On the screen right here, what we've done is on this exhibit is to show where the site is located at and the surrounding zonings. To the south is the Providence Development, zoned R1D, PUD. There is a single-family home just to the southwest of the site. It's zoned R1A. Across Bates Road is the COVID Door Dean. It's zoned R1, PUD. And then to the east is the Twin Chimneys Elementary School. What our proposal is, is to rezone the site, which is currently R1A, to R1D, to build 28 attached units in 14 buildings. Each of these will all be on separate lots that will be 5,400 square foot with a minimum of 45-foot wide frontage. Each home will adhere to the 25-foot building line, 10-foot side yard, and the 20-foot rear yard. If I could get you, please, to go to the down... Scroll down one more, please. This is the site. What we've done is we've placed the plan on top of the aerial so that you could see where each of the homes are in relationship to the surrounding development. There'll be one curb cut onto Bates Road, just a little north of where the existing curb cut is for the single-family home that was there. We'll have one cul-de-sac that will run through the site to the east, and we'll have a small little bubble. And also, you'll notice that I've got two large areas that are kind of a lighter green. Those are going to be the detention basins. That's where they'll be located at. The darker green is the existing mature trees that will be around the perimeter of the site. Those were proposing to maintain that as a buffer. And then, as was brought up in planning and zoning, a lot of, with the residents and their comments, a lot of these trees and through there are... Some are dead. There's a lot of invasive species there that are in there. We'll go in and clean that up. And then by cleaning that up, we're going to, if we end up with some void areas, we're proposing to take some of the mitigation that we're going to be required because we do fall in that situation to where we remove more trees than required. So we have to mitigate those trees. We're going to ask that the city allow us to mitigate these areas by taking some of that material and filling in those voids that are created. There was comments in the planning and zoning meetings where we were asked to go back to MoDOT, to explore the opportunity to have that cul-de-sac become a access, or a access somewhere along that northern boundary line, and to remove the access onto Bates Road. We had originally went to MoDOT to make that request, and MoDOT said no, they would prefer not to have that access, wanted the access to stay on Bates Road. So we went a second time back to MoDOT. We had a team's meeting with Paul, with MoDOT. On that call was also the city administrator and city engineer. There was some comments that was made in that about a write-in, write-out of a possibility, and that was before the information was presented that showed the documentation that that whole north end, which would be the south end of 364 is right away, is that it's deed restricted. So MoDOT said for us to be able to try and break that, we'd have to go to Jeff City, and he said it was a potential that it was close to null as far as us getting that break in that access. So I wanted to bring that up, which was came from planning and zoning meeting. Also, from the meetings that we had, what, planning and zoning, some of the citizens that had talked about the added water that's running through the south that goes through the one single-family and the... Just below us, below that detention basin. We explored that, looked at that, and what that is, is coming from MoDOT, that's a line that discharges and runs through the site. That will be picked up and discharged through our site. And in order to try and help mitigate some of the conditions and the concerns that the residents to the south have with stormwater, what we've agreed to do is to over-deteach our site and our basin. So that's why that one basin looks so large, is because we're going to over-deteach in that area to try and help mitigate the issues that we've heard from the residents south of the development. I'll also mention, as you can see on here, it's kind of hard to see, but each one of these homes are going to have two-car garages. And then the driveways are going to be a minimum of 25-foot behind the building line. So there'll be plenty of room for two cars in the drive and two cars in the garage. Also, sidewalks will be on both sides of the street, and we have strategically located our streetlights, where we're proposing the streetlights would be on the north side of our street to try and help mitigate any type of light trespass that would be achieved by the folks in the south of us in the Providence Development. Also note that it was brought up that the concern of the residents to the south of us was where our house is going to be and the concern of having two-story homes there looking down onto them. So what we did is we agreed that all the homes along the southern boundary would only be ranch models. So all of those will be ranch. There will not be any two-story models. All two stories will be on the north-hand side. And here again, that dictate whether or not the homeowner that's purchasing that, whether or not they'll purchase that. Now, if I could ask you to go to the very first PDF... No, next one, please. There should be one more that has the whole set of improvement plan. And I provided our preliminary play. I provided each one of the members a copy of the plans. Should be the very first one on the top. Having a little difficulty, but what I'd like to mention, what I was looking to do was, is we have some cross-sections, and you'll see in your packet there, you'll see that we've provided cross-sections because at planning and zoning, there was concerns and wanting to be able to see how those units are going to look over the top of these units. So what we did is we provided individual cross-sections. The first cross-section that you'll see is a cross-section that goes through right at the existing residence that's at the front of the development. So now, that cross-section, you can kind of see their garage, and you can see we're fairly level with those homes. Then the next one is about halfway down through the development, and it goes through, and you can see, and it's about where the retaining wall starts. There's a retaining wall that runs along the back of that development. And because of Providence Development, because of that, what's happened is, we wanted to show the difference because here again, the concern was that they didn't want to have our residents looking down into them, but here again, physically, where's the retaining wall, and we're sitting upwind from them. So what we tried to do was demonstrate that we were going to keep that from... Try to keep that from happening by keeping the existing buffer that runs through along that southern boundary line. And then the last one is basically through the cul-de-sac running to the south, and it shows where the retaining wall is actually higher now. So we're actually up even higher, so to try and show what we're trying to do. If I could have you maybe go to the second one, see if that one works.
Is it this one?
No. No, it'd be the second PDF. That one. Let's see if that's it. Nope. I apologize. It was loaded on earlier.
There's just three files on here.
Yeah. Try that one. Is that the very first one?
That's the very first one.
Okay. Again, I apologize for that, but in your package, you can see those, and I'll take any questions that you may have regarding those. But we tried to demonstrate that. The other thing too was that was brought up in planning and zoning was the potential of putting a fence along that property line. We agreed that we'll put a fence up along there, but the question is, and the thing that we'd like to caution is, is there is a lot of mature trees in some areas. Again, there's going to be trees that are going to be invasive that need to be taken out, some dead trees, but there is some material there that we'd like to keep, and then in order to install the fence, it doesn't make any sense to take out trees to put up a six-foot fence. So what we would offer is to try and do what we call a green fence, which is put as much landscaping there as we can. We'll be happy to do the fence, but in lieu of doing the fence, doing a green fence. And then lastly, the homes themselves will have ranch. The ranch models will be 1,590 square feet. Two stories will go from 2,581 to 2,744 square foot, and they're going to start somewhere in the low 400,000.
Are there any depictions in the documents you sent to us of these homes?
Yes. If you go to that very first one and scroll up, keep going up, and you'll see the homes are at the bottom. There you go. Here again, I apologize. It's kind of hard to see them. They're kind of small. But that is the ranch model, and then if you scroll up, that's the first two-story model. There's going to be two two-story models, and then if you go down, there's another two-story model.
Will these be brick?
Yeah, there'll be some brick. There'll be siding. That's the floor plans. That's the two-story. And you can see by these two models, one is shows the garages together, another one is putting the garages apart. What we wanted to do, or what the builder wants to be able to do, is to not have them all as all garages together so that it doesn't look like it's just a cookie cutter throughout the whole thing. So to break it up is we'll have some that'll be garages apart and then garages together. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The question I have is just as far as building and then selling, is this... Somebody comes in, and since you have duplexes effectively, somebody, you build it, and then somebody comes in and buys it, or is it... Or you're building everything, you know, independently of any consumer, and then they come in and buy it?
No, these would be for sale. These would be people will come in and actually choose the elevation. Now, obviously, if you choose one elevation, that's going to be the elevation for both models.
Okay.
Try. Try bases.
Who's the target audience you're looking to get these houses or sell to these houses?
Empty nesters.
Empty nesters. Thank you. Okay.
And that and two-story, is that also a two-story half-model?
Correct.
Two-story is a story.
Yes.
I think that we talked about in P&amp;Z that you were going to need a variance for some of these models because they're going to be over the 30% coverage of the lot.
That is correct. And in fact, on sheet two of your set of plans, we have a listing of all three of the models, what their square footage is, and we have a table on the right-hand side of it that shows exactly what the percentage on which model, if it's set on the lot, what the percentages would be. And we will be requesting to the Board of Adjustment a variance for that to go up to 40% because some of our... Because of the restraints of our property, because it's very narrow, very long and narrow, we've got the highways to the north of us, it prohibits us from expanding the lots and being able to get the square footages before the houses and the product that we're wanting to build. Now, if we were allowed to do the PUD, we wouldn't need a variance, but we were told early on that we want, that the city would prefer us not to go PUD, so that's what we're doing, is going straight zoning in the R1D.
The other concern I have is when I look... I happen to have this copy that you gave at P&amp;Z. When I looked at the garages, they're 20 by 20. And so I look at the vehicles that I have, and that basically leaves me a foot and a half from the wall to the garage door with my vehicle. And same thing with my husband's vehicle. It leaves me seven feet, three feet, four feet, and three feet to get in and out of those vehicles. And also, we have an ordinance in the city that trash cans cannot be sitting visible outside. So I find it a little bit difficult to figure out how to put two vehicles, a trash can, and a few other things that you need, you know, for the home in a 20 by 20 garage because your driveway also isn't that long. So I have a concern about that size of a garage. I know in a lot of the homes in my area, people are parking out in the driveway because they can't fit everything in the garages anymore. And so then it also creates parking on the street. So I'm just concerned that for the size of the home that you are building, the garages are not going to be enough. And I just... It creates issues for the city after the fact when then we have residents who are not able to comply, or they don't comply because it's easier not to comply because it's tough getting everything in that garage. So I'd like to see if down the road here, as we may have time, for you to figure out how to add, even if it's another two feet depth in the garage somewhere, and see if you can give the owner a better garage space for more toys.
I'll be happy to mention that to the developer builder and take it to the architect to have him take a look at it.
Okay.
I do have one question. On the side of the highway, I know it's going to be kind of loud. I know you're saving the homes that are currently here, but the new homes, will that be some kind of buffer? I know you think you have some trees out there. Will they bring kind of buffer to support that noise from the highway? I'm just asking.
There won't be a sound barrier, no. We'll just be landscaping that through there.
Is there... I can't tell. Are there basements?
Yes, they'll all have basements. In fact, and I apologize I didn't bring this up, but all of the... Most of the homes along the southern boundary will be walkout basements.
I have another question. So has BlueOnyx developed these specific models anywhere else before?
Not that I'm aware of, no. These are all going to be brand new.
So this is a design that's never been implemented. Is there any other similar designs that BlueOnyx has developed of this kind of duplex-style ranch, two-story combination?
I don't believe here in the St. Louis metro area, no.
Where do they build in Chesterfield, man?
I'm sorry?
Where they build in Chesterfield.
I'm unaware of what they're building right now. They don't... I know they've got one under construction, but I don't know they're actually building.
Do you know where the other ones that were developed outside of the metropolitan area were developed at?
Florida.
Florida.
They're mainly of Florida, but developer builder.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from the Board? Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak during public hearing?
Sorry, Charlie Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Costello. I live at 737th Air Court, right below their East Retention Basin. There are so many things wrong with this program. They never show anything big enough for any of us to see. Makes me think they're trying to hide things. So I have a list of things. My first concern is the fence. No matter how much landscaping they put in, they can still walk down and look on all the south property and look in our homes. To me, the fence is a must. They don't have to take out trees. They can leave a two-foot buffer. They can go right to our property line and start the fence. Nobody wants people standing 12 feet above your house, looking into your house at any time of the day. The entrance to MODOT, I don't believe anything they're saying. The dentist's office, Darden Dental just got a full entrance. I don't know why they think they can't get a full entrance. My car wash is on Highway N. I asked for an entrance. They gave it to me. I think to keep the traffic off of Bates Road, the main entrance should be on the South Service Road. I think before you approve this, you need to have a letter sent to Jefferson City. Don't go on his hearsay, because he's going to have to redo his engineering and spend a little bit of money for the people of Darton Prairie to make a better place. I have really never heard, they said they might not approve the entrance. Well, we need proof. I need proof that they can't get an entrance off the service road. I don't believe them. The other things, we talked about the fence. What company is doing the hydraulic study for the water for the retention basins? Is anybody from staff here tonight that can tell us, are they putting in downstream defenders coming out of these retention basins?
As noted earlier, sir, this is not a question and answer with the staff. This is the public comment section.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Please consider.
So I, they want to tie into Providence's stormwater. I want clean stormwater coming into Providence. I want to know if there is, the downstream detentions, they're expensive. He's not going to want to do it. They need to be put in. Okay? You did mention the starting price of 400. Is that what the price of the villa starts?
Again, sir, it's not a Q and A up here. Whatever your comments are, we're here to listen to you, sir.
Is there, I can't ask if there's a performance bond required by the city for these people?
I welcome you to.
How do I get these answers?
You go to the city, sir. I think I directed you previously to our city administrator and city engineer to have discussions with them. But we're not here to do a Q and A with the city staff and the board.
I'm concerned they've never built villas. I'm concerned they don't have the expertise to do villas. They're in the dirt business. I don't know if they're turning this over to investors to make money on, because if you go to their website, they brag about how much money they make on all their projects. And I'm afraid they're going to do that here and skimp on everything. And I've never seen a landscaping plan. He says he's going to landscape. How do we know? We're all in our, my time up.
Yeah, I think we probably got a little extra, actually. I think our timer got some malfunction, so you certainly got.
I've only talked for two minutes, son.
Yeah.
And I do want to, I do want to thank you all for your service. I was going to thank you, but now that I know you make so much money, the $375, no thanks for anybody.
Thank you, sir.
Give yourself the money.
All right. Appreciate the commentary, sir. Anybody else?
Tom Stanton.
Thanks, Board, for letting me speak. I live at 827 Benefit Street in Providence. I have concerns with the amount of traffic that's on Bates as it stands today. The intersection of the South Outer Service Road and Bates during your rush hours, the morning, afternoons, it's not uncommon to have full-size bus, school buses, along with at least up to 12, 13 cars in line, which is going to present a problem if emergency vehicles at any given time of the morning or evening have to get into this gentleman's development, once people are living in there. And at that point, where do the cars go to get out of the way of a fire engine? They can't get out on the service road because the traffic's been picking up on that road ever since they've been developing west of Highway 40. Bates has been, it's growing more and more with traffic because people are using it for a cut-through to avoid Highway K. All the way from K and the intersection of that QT and Highway 40, they worked their way through Weldon Springs, Henning, Bates, all the way to pick up 364. Bates is an ideal situation for people on any of those subdivisions to gain easy access to 364. And I think the city needs to work with the state to figure out how to make that entrance, regardless if it's this man's development. Whoever develops, if there's a situation with this deed, then I think the city needs to work with the state on how to figure that out and not make any entrance or exit on Bates for whatever they develop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ten. Okay. No further speaker cards have been submitted. So one more time to the board. Any further discussion or comments? None heard. Can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing session? Moved by Alderman Nay, second by Alderman Detwiler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. The public hearing section is closed. On to new business. Okay, we've got a handful of, one, two, three, four, five items on the agenda. So the first one is going to be Bill 2554. May I have a motion to read Bill 2554 by title only for the first time?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2554 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, providing for the rezoning of approximately 6.84 acres of land, commonly known as Stillwater Grove, from R1A Single Family Residential District to R1D Single Family Residential District.
This is the first reading, and it is not administrative, so it'll be the first reading. But just as a reminder to the board of our own policies, as well as for anybody else who's out here, this will not be read a second time per the board's standing policy. But that being said, does the board have any comments on Bill 2554 that they would like to bring before the board?
I do. It's a, this is a project that's been long awaited to hear anything about. This is the first we've seen this, this night. So I'm not prepared to even discuss rezoning of the property at this point. It's not, they haven't proven their due diligence in any way. Blue Onyx is a little bit behind the eight ball here, because we've been waiting for this public hearing from this project for, what, three months? And each time, it's canceled. Well, I'm not quite sure I agree with the building ethics of this company. And I'm not sure we would need them in Darting Prairie. So it's only six acres. Maybe find another six acres somewhere else.
Thank you, Alderman Nay. Any other aldermen wish to speak on Bill 2554? Okay. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that I think, you know, something is going to go in this acreage eventually. But I think, knowing that, we need to choose the right thing to go in this acreage. And I, you know, I've had a lot of misconceptions about this development from the beginning. And I just continue to find other things that I feel like are not, just not Darting Prairie-worthy. So I don't think we're ready to vote on this today.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we're not going to. Okay. Any additional comments on 2554? None heard? Okay. Moving on to Bill 2555. This is a similar, what we'll read here in a second, but this is related as well. But we'll let the city, we'll entertain a motion for reading Bill 2555 for the first time by title only.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Detwiler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2555 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, approving a conditional use permit for certain property commonly known as Stillwater Grove.
Any further comments or discussion, or any comments or discussion on 2555? Again, this is not administrative, and it will only be read one time tonight.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The conditional use permit, the CUP, I thought they were talking about not doing a CUP because they were going to ask the Board of Adjustments? Am I confused? A PUD. Okay, my bad. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Again, I think I need to emphasize that I don't believe that Blue Onyx is, my confidence level in them is extremely low.
All right. Any further comments? Okay, none heard. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Bill 2556. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2556 by title only for the first time?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer?
Yep.
Gettemeyer, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2556 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute supplemental agreement number one with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Post Road Phase One Project STBG-7302 (700).
Any discussion on this? And this would be administrative, correct? Yep. Does the board agree this is administrative?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on 2556 from the board? None heard. Entertained a motion to read Bill 2556 by title only for the second time?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2556 by title only for the second time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute supplemental agreement number one with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Post Road Phase One Project STBG-732 (700).
Any further discussion? None heard. Entertain a motion for roll call vote?
So moved.
Nay.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. City clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Alderman Detwiler.
Aye.
Six As becomes ordinance number 2387.
One more time, please.
2387.
And now declare Bill 2556 passed and ordinance number 2387. Okay. Moving right along. Next up on the agenda is Bill 2557. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2557 by title only for the first time?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2557 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to accept the bid from Asphalt Services LLC for asphalt trail crack sealing and replacement for the Barrett Haven and Bluebird Meadow Trails.
Okay. And is this something that we want to consider administrative, or is this something that we want to read one time?
Let me ask a question. How long does it take? It just takes weeks or months to replace this? Just asking.
To seal the cracks?
Yes, sir.
Their schedule, they submitted to me, said it would take six days.
Six days?
Six days until we pass it, correct?
Yes.
Six days to complete the project?
Yeah, the complete project.
I mean, this could be administrative if it's a problem. I think we should move forward.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's more given, like usually when we give the city administrator authority to do something, that's an administrative, you know, we're not, to do a contract, we typically use that as administrative.
No problem.
But the board agrees it's administrative, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That being said, entertain a motion to read Bill 2557 by title only for the second time.
So moved. Second. Sorry.
Moved by Alderman Nay, got you first, Johnson, and then second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2557 by title only for the second time.
An ordinance of the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to accept the bid from Asphalt Services LLC for asphalt trail crack sealing and replacement for the Barrett Haven and Bluebird Meadow Trails.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? So for the audience's edification of just what this is, the Barrett Haven and Bluebird Meadow Parkway's trails are aging, and there are certain spots in there. The city engineer talked about it earlier. There are areas that are deficient, cracking, falling apart. And for the safety and beautification of the park, it's something, and that's what this is for, just for the audience's notification here. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2557? I'm sorry. Can I entertain a motion for a roll call vote on Bill 2557?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Gettemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Detwiler.
Aye.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Six As. And becomes ordinance number 2388.
I now declare Bill 2557 passed and ordinance 2388. Next up, this is not administrative, so it'll be read one time tonight. Bill 2558. Can I entertain a motion to read Bill 2558 by title only for the first time?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Detwiler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City attorney, please read Bill 2558 by title only for the first time.
An ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Darton Prairie, Missouri, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion about the budget? Okay. Again, you know, we talked about it earlier. The city staff did a phenomenal job putting together their budget, each, you know, Kathy had each, you know, section lead effectively of our staff put together their budget. Kathy put it down, went through with Kim, our city financial manager, and went through and got it into this really great format. And then the board took the time to go through this whole packet and walk through everything. So it really is good to have that level of confidence in your budget, what you're going through, and have the collaborative approach that we took. So I'd like to, you know, give a big thanks to the board and specifically to Kathy for sort of managing this process. So, that being said, we'll move on. We're not going to vote on that tonight, but move on to the next item on the agenda. And so this one is a bit, I'm sorry, now I'm reading these notes here. So this one, the next item is number five, is reconsideration, which is a bit unusual, something that we don't see very often. But we will, we talked about it in the work session, and so it's already been voted on twice. I'm sorry, it's already been read twice. So when we bring this in for reconsideration, city attorney, are we going to read it again, or should I just explain to the, what this is about?
Mr., so what, the bill's been read twice. Mr. Mayor, so what, the bill's been read twice already and it failed at the vote that was taken on 11/5/25. What we would look for now would be the motion for reconsideration. If that motion were approved, then there would just go into a vote, either, or excuse me, there would be a motion to have a vote, or alternatively, if the Board chooses, they could postpone this, similar to other bills after they've been read twice.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do then is just do a quick summary of what the, what Bill 2542 was. The Board already knows, we talked about it in the work session, don't know who's come in during regular sessions, so I'm gonna just do a quick summary. And Board and City Administrator, feel free to jump in if, if I start not making any sense. So Bates Road currently has three lanes, stripes, three stripes on the lanes down the middle, and there was concern with this proposal to put bike lanes in and remove the three lanes and, and reduce it down to two. With that, we would have, and we voted it down, which means that we sent that, we sent that and we lost the money to do so. We went and reconsidered it and it's being brought back for re-vote. And the reason is, is because there's an off, there's a couple different reasons. One, there's an off-road solution that would, would retain the three lanes, and that's really what I think the primary concern was with that. And it's also just going to design. So there's, so there's two parts to that. Is one, we as a city and the Board and, and the Mayor, we, we can control what gets approved and what gets pushed forward or not, and we are, and I can't speak for the Board, but I, I will say I'm confident that the, the sentiments of the residents is, is understood and appreciated by, by myself and many of the other Board members that I've talked to. So that being said, the off-road solution satisfies the bike trail or bike lane that was required to get the nearly $1 million to resurface and, and redo that whole road there. And that's, you know, that's a lot of money left on the table. So this is a positive alternative. It widens a sidewalk, it makes it a shared sidewalk, and I believe it's safer for every bicyclist on there anyway to be on Bates Road, so. But these are the things that, you know, we're, we're looking at with reconsideration. Again, I think most of the folks were probably already here earlier. Now, that being said, I wanted just, for those that weren't, I, I do have a conflict of interest, as it was at a past meeting, if anybody was here then. Federal employee in my day job, so therefore I cannot vote on anything related to federal tax dollars, which, that's where that money's coming from. So I will have to abstain again on this vote. But, that being said, City Attorney, what is the recommended, proposed approach for this at this point?
Right. So for the reconsideration, if the Board chooses, there would need to be a motion made by a person that was on the prevailing side of the previous vote, which in this case, because the bill failed, would be a person who, no. If that motion is approved, then it would go again to either a motion for a vote on the, the bill, or if the Board chooses, they could do a motion to postpone.
So I'd like to entertain a motion for reconsideration from a Board member from the prevailing side.
I can do that.
Motion by Alderman Gettemeyer. Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Nay. Any opposed? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? None heard.
So now, Mr. Mayor, there could be a motion to vote on Bill number 2542, or a motion to postpone Bill 2542 to the next meeting. We'd be looking for that motion from one of the Aldermen.
And at this point, it doesn't have to be from any prevailing side or not, it's any Alderman can make a motion at this point?
Correct, because the motion for reconsideration passed.
Okay. I will hand that over to the Board if anybody would like to make a consideration for one of those considerations.
Roll call, alright.
Motion for roll call vote from Alderman Waters.
Second.
Second by Alderman Nay. It's a tie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Waters. Alderman Detwiler. Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Five As, one Nay. Motion passes. Becomes ordinance number 2389.
And now declare Bill 2542 pass and ordinance number 2389. Okay. Moving on to old business. Okay. Okay. Have a motion to read Bill 2548?
I think so, yeah.
Actually, we already had a second reading, and the final passage was postponed.
If I could add, Mayor, the, the final passage was postponed because the applicant was out of town and had asked the Board to postpone action, final action on this item. The applicant is here this morning. If any of the Board had comments or questions, they wanted the applicant to answer.
Okay, thank you, City Administrator. Any discussion on 2548 prior to a vote? The applicant is present.
I got, I got a question. I get, the question was, was he or was he not put in the drive-through?
Go ahead, sir. Please speak in a microphone, that's how he's gonna hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to all the Board members. So the question of the drive-through, it's, if the Board is more comfortable and if the city wants us not to do the drive-through, I'm perfectly okay with not having a drive-through there, so.
My, my feeling is, I don't believe we really need a drive-through liquor store. I mean, that, that's my point.
Yeah, I agree with you there, and we will not use the drive-through.
Oh, one second. Thank you, Alderman Johnson. We're quick, we're cuddling with the City Attorney here, so go ahead.
Right, so the, the conditional use permit was both for the liquor sales as well as the retail, or excuse me, the drive-through facility use. So in this case, what the city, what the Board could do is have a motion to amend the conditional use permit to remove the drive-through facility use, and then proceed with the alcoholic beverages conditional use pursuant to this, this vote.
I'd like to amend the motion, just like the City Attorney said.
Motion to amend?
Second.
So do we, do we amend it now and then vote as amended? Okay. Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Wilson, to amend as City Attorney has said. All in favor?
Hold on, oh, aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None heard?
We can still ask questions, though, right?
Yeah, we're just amending it right now. So the motion to amend is passed, and we will amend as discussed by the city, as was said by the City Attorney, and which will remove effectively the drive-through component of this liquor store. Alderman Wilson.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, sir. I visited your other store on Old Nye Highway 94, and I was a little concerned about the counter that you have. Right there on front was like four containers of THC, right where you would set your bottles of liquor to purchase them, and right next to that was four, maybe five bottles of open liquor for sampling. I guess my concerns are, they're too readily available to folks just walking up to the counter if your people are off to the side busy. So if you're gonna have samplings, which I don't know how our liquor law with our city code allows what you have to do for that, but I would, I would think it would be better to keep that maybe in a display case or something where people know that, you know, they can have a sample of that. I know the other liquor stores do that, but not right there. I mean, my husband purchased a bottle of liquor, and we had a hard time finding a place to set it down in order to do the credit card. So I think it was, it would be much better to keep your counter clear where people are purchasing, and my preference would be that you didn't sell the THC at all, so.
And on the THC side of it, obviously, the distributors that provide the product, if the product is banned, which kind of did actually last year by the state of Missouri for a short period of time, all those products were pulled off the shelves. So as long as we are following the rules and regulations that we need to follow, if anything, if we're not obviously allowed to sell any sort of product like that, we will not sell those products.
I just wouldn't make it as readily available for somebody to reach and grab it.
I'll definitely take that into consideration, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your commentary there. Any, any other further discussion, questions, concerns by the Board to the question party? Okay. Entertain a motion for a roll call vote on Bill 2548.
Move for roll call vote on 2548.
Thanks. Motion by Alderman Nay, second by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gettemeyer. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Alderman Detwiler.
Aye.
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Six As. Becomes ordinance number 2390.
I now declare Bill 2548 pass and ordinance number 2390. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. This was read one time on 11/5/25. Bill 2553, can I entertain a motion by the Board to read Bill 2553 by title only for the second time? Move by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. City Attorney, please read Bill 2553 by title only for the second time.
An ordinance of the City of Darton Prairie, Missouri authorizing the city administrator to execute a purchase order with Stuart signs for an outdoor 6mm full-color digital sign.
Any discussion from the Board on this? This is, this is gonna be the new sign out in front of City Hall. It's gonna help us create transparency with what we're doing, provide better advertisement for folks and, you know, what's going on, and it's gonna be, City Administrator can tell you more about it, but just wanna make sure everybody who took the time to come out here is aware of what we're doing up here, so go ahead, City Administrator.
I would ask Rose to speak on it. So this digital sign is important to the city because it will provide transparency regarding what's going on, any kind of emergency situations we can display on the sign, and also just any advertisements that we want our residents to see. So it will be replacing the sign that's currently there that's been broken for about a year and a half.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. No further discussion from the Board. Entertain a motion for roll call vote?
We'll move.
Move by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Nay.
Aye.
Alderman Waters.
Aye.
Alderman Gettemeyer.
Aye.
Alderman Detwiler.
Aye.
Six As. Becomes ordinance number 2391.
I now declare Bill 2553 pass and ordinance number 2391. Staff, Officer Staff Communications, City Attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right, City Engineer, anything further, anything you'd like to bring up?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator?
Thank you. The city's annual Tree of Lights event was Friday, November 14th. We were blessed with some beautiful weather and had large turnout for this special event. In partnership with the Salvation Army, this event marks the start of the holiday season and reminds us of the importance of giving to those in our community that are in need. City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on November, Thursday, November 27th and on Friday, November 28th. And just a reminder that breakfast with Santa will be that Saturday of Thanksgiving, Saturday, November 29th, featuring Chris's pancakes and our very own Darton Prairie Santa. There are two seating for breakfast, one at 9:30 and one at 10:30. This is a very fun family event, and my experience last year is, it's very low-key. If you're looking for a family event that doesn't involve lots of crowds and stress, this is for you. Registration is required.
I'm sorry, quick question, Kathy. Is Nicole putting out volunteers for that event? I don't know if she did. Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know if she did or didn't, but I'll remind her if you needed to.
It's, it's, it's on your calendar. You can volunteer through your calendar.
Oh, okay, then, I already hit yes.
I know you wanna be sure to get some tang, so you're gonna be here to help out.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kathy. Alderman?
Go ahead. Oh, no.
I just also wanted to say that on Saturday, December 6th, Darton Prairie Aldermen and other staff will be volunteering up at the Schnucks at Town Square for the Red Kettle Bell Ringing for Salvation Army. So we'd like to see all, as many of our residents come out and not only patronize the store, but also contribute to the Salvation Army Red Kettle. I think the city has done well in the last few years with this event, and it's kind of a rivalry thing with the neighboring cities to be sure that we get the most dollars in our kettle for that period of time. So I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Okay. There's no further comments from the Aldermen. That comes to me. I'd like to talk about the Mayor's for Meals 12 Days of Christmas, so between December 10th and 23rd, we're gonna be collecting non-perishable food donations at City Hall. So the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis is partnering with St. Louis Area Food Bank for the Mayor's for Meals 12 Days of Christmas Food Drive. It's an initiative that unites the cities across the metro area and it helps us fight hunger and support families in need during the holidays. I'm sure many of you guys know there's been a lot of strain put on many local families, especially with the government shutdown, the tornado that hit in St. Louis earlier this year. There's a lot of, a lot of folks out there that are, and certainly in need of this support, so we, you know, any donation, big or small, provides meals for local families, and we encourage everybody who can join to, to donate here. So again, from December 10th to 23rd, non-perishable food items can be dropped off here at City Hall. Please, you know, share, spread the word and, you know, let's get, get some food up here and try to make a difference in our community as we approach the holidays, so. That being said, I know, I wanted to thank everybody that came out. I've seen a couple faces out here before, and I know there's a couple issues specifically over in Ward 2 off Bates Road. You know, you guys are very concerned about it, and anytime you guys take the time to come to City Hall, I wanna make sure that you know how much we appreciate your feedback and hearing your voice and, and participating in, in our local government, because as leaders, we try our best to make the decisions, but it helps us when we get the chance to talk to the residents as well. So thank you for coming out here. Thank you to our presenters who came out tonight as well. We appreciate you guys coming in and sharing your, your perspectives and your viewpoints, and thanks you to Officer Tom back there for keeping, keeping this crowd under control, so. That being said, can I entertain a motion adjourn the, the meeting?